And we have a whole slew of Christmas cards from the King family with the boys growing up through the years, so with no further ado, I will turn it over to Senator Angus King.
It's, uh, I don't know, is this working? It is? Okay, good. Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Um, it's wonderful. I have so many memories just washing over me as I, as I walked in. Um, of course, my first memory of Scowhegan is my first day that Edie and I moved here, and we rented a house from Mrs. Watson, from Dale Watson's mother, up on, uh, on the corner of Court and High Street, and it was a Saturday, went to sleep that night, and about nine or 10 at night, suddenly I heard this voice outside, "Help! Help! Let me out! Help!" And, you know, it was very loud and quite passionate, and, and so, you know, being a good citizen, this is my first day in, in living in Maine, went to the phone, picked up the phone, called the police, and I said, "There's someone, I'm on the corner of Court and High Street, someone is calling for help, it sounds like it's a real problem," and I, you know, pulled on some clothes and rushed out to the corner, and the police guard pulled up. It was a drunk in the jail. Uh, I didn't realize I'd moved in right next door to the county jail, and this guy really was being held prisoner. Uh, so that was, that was literally the first night I, I spent in, in Scowhegan. Um, there's so many wonderful stories about Senator Smith being here. Uh, I, of course, I worked for Bill Hathaway, who ran against her in 1972, and, and so, flash forward 15 years, and Public Broadcasting asked me to come and do a documentary about her. And I went up, came up and asked her about it, and spent the afternoon interviewing her and talking to her, and I got home that night and felt guilty. And I said, you know, "I didn't have the nerve to mention that I'd worked for Bill Hathaway, and I don't want her to find that out in the middle of this project," and, you know, it just, so I, I wrote her a little letter. "Dear Senator Smith, I just feel that it's honest to let you know that I worked for Mr. Hathaway in the campaign in 1972, and then in the, in the, in the Senate." And so, a couple of days later, I got these, one of these classics, and many of you have probably gotten them, these letters from Margaret Chase Smith. "Dear Angus King," she always used both names, "Dear Angus King, it is perfectly all right with me that you work for Mr. Hathaway. Sincerely yours, Margaret Chase Smith." That was it. That was it. Um, and so, after doing this documentary, Mary and I got in, used to come up about once every six months, and there's a wonderful picture of her holding Ben when he was about six months old, and we'd sit out in that, in that ante room, and quite often, we'd go to lunch at what was then Widmore's, uh, and then it became Chariers, I think. Anyway, we'd go to lunch, so this went on for two or three lunches, and Margaret would always pay. So, one time, during the lunch, I got up and pretended to go to the restroom, and went over to the cashier and paid. Apparently, Margaret wanted to have that person fired for having let me pay. So, the next time we came up, I tried the same trick, and I got up to the cashier, and the cashier said, "I'm sorry, Mr. King, but Senator Smith came in yesterday and paid." Isn't that, I mean, isn't that just perfect? Uh, and one final story that, that she told us, as you, many of you know, those of you from this area, there's a Margaret Chase Smith school, and every year, she used to go and read to the students, and sort of interact with the students, and she'd take questions, and, and one year, she told us this story, she, one year, she, uh, she was taking questions, this little girl raised her hand and said, "How did you happen to be named after our school?" Uh, and, and I can't resist. One other story, somewhere in here, there's a map of Maine, and I remember walking by, and, and, Charlie, you may know this, she, she'd stop, she said, "Wait, but I want to tell you something about this," and she put her hand up along the coast, you know, she had that wonderful place at Cundy's Harbor, which is at the end of Harpswell, she said, "I went to Eisenhower in the 50s and proposed a highway that was all along the coast as a bridge, just touching the ends of all the points, from, you know, from Cape Elizabeth across to Small Point to Harpswell to, you know, to Georgetown, all the way up," and she said, "Boy, I'm glad he didn't do that." Uh, but, uh, and to be serious just for a moment, uh, we're, this is hallowed ground, folks. Uh, just a few feet from here, in the kitchen of, of Senator Smith's house, was when, where she and Bill Lewis drafted the Declaration of Conscience on Memorial Day weekend of 1950, and sat at the kitchen table and, and wrote it out. It's one of the great speeches of the 20th century, and one of the great acts of integrity and honesty, uh, and, and it's, now, being in the Senate, I can appreciate it, I always appreciated it, and, and I see that my colleague is here, Susan Collins, the most painful thing for a politician is to listen to another politician. So, she's, she's being courageous and, uh, but she'll affirm that, that going against the tide in a place like the Senate, that is a small, you know, unit of people, 100 people, and even with, against your team, your party, it takes extraordinary integrity and just raw courage. And in fact, uh, a couple of stories about the Declaration of Conscience, uh, she had it written, and Bill Lewis had an armful of mimeographed copies of it, and she got into the little trolley to go from the Russell Senate Office Building to the Senate, and lo and behold, she got down and got on the trolley, and who was sitting there but Joe McCarthy? And she looked at him, and he sort of said, "Well, what are you up to, Margaret?" And she said, "I'm gonna make a speech, Joe, and you're not gonna like it." That was the comment. But she was so, to give you an idea of how serious this was, she told Bill Lewis, he had the copies up in the press gallery, up above the, the Senate chamber, but he wasn't to hand them out until she started talking, because she was afraid she was gonna lose her nerve before she actually got to deliver the speech. And, uh, so her instructions to Bill was, "Hold on to them until you see me stand up and actually start delivering the speech," and then he gave them out, and of course, it was a historic, uh, moment, the first time anybody had the nerve to confront Joe McCarthy, and it was, it was a, a very important moment in American history, and of course, he tried, he said, uh, he had a candidate run against her in the primary in 1954, uh, didn't, didn't work, but, uh, this was a, this was an amazing, an amazing moment, and this is a very, a very special place. Um, okay. Uh, I wanna sort of do two things. One is some observations about the Senate, and I wanna end with some observations about an issue. I wanna alert you to what I think is, is, is an important issue. The first observation about the Senate is, it's full of ordinary people. They aren't giants. I expected giants. You know, we think of Muskie, maybe it's because of where, you know, we, we think of Muskie and Everett Dirksen and Lyndon Johnson and, and, uh, uh, but the people in the U.S. Senate are, are pretty real people. You could take this table right here, and it could be, uh, 12 U.S. senators, uh, and that's reassuring to me. Uh, and one of the things that I've, the way I've learned about my colleagues is that my favorite hour of the week is the Wednesday morning Senate prayer breakfast. And the reason I like it is, A, it's a little bit of a respite from, from the, you know, the, all the goings-on of, of the work of the Senate, but secondly, it's, it's the only bipartisan event of the week. It's the only time the senators, other than the official stuff, voting and committees, get together in a kind of relaxed, uh, setting, there's no press, no staff, it's usually 15 or 20 senators, there's a hardcore that are there every, uh, every week, mostly either Mormons or Baptist Republicans, but those, that's the hardcore, and, but it's, it's a bipartisan time, it's a time to, to, to sort of have those kinds of relationships that are so important, uh, in, in a collegial body, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But the other piece that's important is that each week, a different senator is asked to speak, to talk about their faith, but it always ends up being autobiographical, it always ends up being, you know, about their family, their background, how they grew up, their children, and, uh, it's fascinating to learn about these people as, as real people. And what's come through to me is that very few, with the possible exception of J. Rockefeller, are some kind of aristocrats, you know, from, from big, old, long-term families with a lot of money, or those kinds of things. Um, and this is sort of interesting, and this is totally anecdotal, okay? I haven't done this scientifically, but I've been struck, listening week after week, how many of the senators are from single-parent households. Mom died when I was 10, and my father raised the four of us. Dad ran off when I was two, I never knew him. A large number of, of senators are from, uh, the, very tough backgrounds, um, and you learn the most fascinating things. Ted Cruz, who you've all heard of, uh, I'm the world's oldest freshman, he's the world's most famous freshman, I think. Uh, here's something I suspect you don't know, you probably know that his dad was Cuban. What you may not know is that when his dad was 14 years old, he went into the mountains and joined Castro's army, and fought with Fidel Castro's army for four years, and was captured by Batista, jailed and tortured at 18, got, his family got him out of jail, they got him to, to Texas with $100 in his underwear, he got a job, the only job he could get was, was, uh, washing dishes, and that's, this guy's son is now a United States senator from Texas. And story after story, our friend Lindsey Graham, uh, was raised above a combination bar in pool room, both his parents died when he was about 20, he raised his sister, I mean, these are, these are real people, and I find that reassuring, and they're real people who want to do good for the country. They have very different views of what that good constitutes and how to approach it, but I, there, there, nobody there I can think of who's there for some kind of ulterior motive, you know, that they want to move on to some other job, or make a lot of money, or something like that, it doesn't, that's, that's not the case. So, I find that reassuring, that's observation number one. United States senators are real people, uh, and, and I think that, I think that's important. Uh, number two, it really is a partisan place. Now, the interesting thing is, the conventional wisdom is, you hear these terms, "It's partisan, it's toxic, it's a poisonous atmosphere," that's not true. What, what I say is, it's partisan institutionally, but not personally, and the best, best way you can judge this for yourself is if you're, one night, you're having trouble sleeping, watch C-SPAN, and, and watch a vote in the U.S. Senate, because the, the votes aren't like you see on TV, where everybody sits in their desk, and they call the roll, and you say aye or nay, that virtually never happens. A vote consists of all the senators streaming into the chamber from all over where their offices, committee meetings, and whatever, and they go down and vote at the, at the front desk, and the vote, it, just one at a time, and there's, you know, there's about a 15 or 20-minute time limit, and you go in, and you say yes or no. In fact, I, I was presiding one day, don't get excited about that, presiding is a chore. Uh, all freshmen of, in the majority party have to, have to preside. So, I was presiding one day, and it was one of the, Susan, it was one of the bills where everybody was gonna vote for it, one of your Republican colleagues, who I won't mention, came up, and, and I heard him say, and he was making a joke, and he said, "How do you vote yes?" He said, "I've never voted yes before." Uh, I got a big kick out of that. I'll tell you later who it was, Susan. Uh, but, but if you watch this voting process, the interesting thing to me is what you'll see, you see people vote, but then you see people talking. It's a milling around, it's like Saturday morning market, the Market Square on Saturday morning, and you see people milling around, talking, chatting, on a bipartisan basis. You, you know, you'll see Dick Durbin talking to Lamar Alexander, or Roy Blunt talking to Dianne Feinstein, or whatever, and they're generally doing business, they're talking about, you know, "Would you like to co-sponsor my amendment?" Or, "What do you think of the hearing that we had yesterday?" It's generally that kind of thing, and it's, it's pretty bipartisan. Um, the other thing, and I like to occasionally go to the back of the chamber and just sort of watch, it's like being at an airport, you know, you can watch people. The other thing that I've noticed is that we have the largest number of women we've ever had in the Senate, 20, and, but if you watch this sort of milling around, they aren't women senators, they're senators who happen to be women. They're, in other words, all the women don't stand in one corner talking to each other, uh, they're all, you know, it's, it's Patty Murray, you know, talking to, to me, or Dick Durbin, or, or, uh, somebody on, you know, on the Republican side, Mike Lee, or whatever, it's, they're, they're, they are part, Susan, do you agree with that? They're intimately integrated into the body, there's not, there's, nobody thinks, "Oh, this is a woman senator I'm talking to." The other thing I would point out, that in the last four months, we've really done four or five major pieces of legislation, I know that's a surprise. Um, one was the bipartisan budget bill, one was the comprehensive appropriation bill, one was the farm bill, uh, and one was the flood insurance, uh, reform bill. Uh, all four of those major pieces of legislation were led by women in the Senate. Now, I'm not ready to declare a theory, but I think it's more than a coincidence, uh, that these are people who want to get things done. Uh, and, uh, Susan, of course, I'm gonna talk a bit about the Common Sense Caucus, uh, but women are a very important part of the, of the institution, and in major leadership roles, chairman of the Intelligence Committee, the chairman of the Appropriations Committee, uh, chair of the Agriculture Committee, chair of the Budget Committee, uh, very important, both, uh, procedurally, but also subsidably. So, it's a, uh, it's a partisan place institutionally, but not so much personally, and here's one of the problems, and I alluded to this. One of the problems is, and this is a big change, when I worked for Mr. Hathaway, which is, by the way, I was, I was sworn in as a U.S. senator 40 years to the day, from the day I entered Senate service as a staff member in January of 1973. So, it gives me a very interesting perspective, and one of the biggest differences is, nobody lives there anymore, in Washington. When I was there, when Margaret was there, she had to drive back and forth, and I suspect she probably came home once every couple of months, but now, everybody goes home every weekend, even the senators from Colorado and Wyoming go home every weekend, and their families are at home. Michael Bennett, senator from Colorado, uh, oh.
Sorry?
It's all right. Don Carrigan, everybody.
This isn't gonna work. Here, let me do this.
Even the, uh, uh, Michael Bennett's family lives in Denver, his wife and kids are in Denver. Uh, Senator from Wyoming goes home, Idaho, Arizona, New Mexico, every, the place just clears out, and the schedule is such that it accommodates that, because the first votes are usually Monday afternoon, and the last votes are Thursday afternoon, so everybody goes, goes home Thursday night, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Now, some people say, "Oh, well, they're not working very hard." Well, Susan will tell you, Friday and Saturday at home are generally, you know, working, meeting businesses, touring businesses, talking, talking to, to people around the state, but, but what this does is diminish the opportunity for personal relationships, because when I was down there 40 years ago, and everybody lived there, their kids went to high school together, they played on teams together, they had, they played golf together, they had family barbecues, uh, it was a very much of a more collegial kind of place, and now that just doesn't happen, because everybody clears out. I've tried to start in my own small way, uh, you know, my own little, uh, I don't know what to call it, uh, social program of having little dinners, that, Mary and I bought a tiny little house, it's, when I say tiny, it's, you know, 950 square feet, near the Capitol, and having group, four or five senators over for dinner. Uh, bipartisan, just to, not to talk about policy, or committee work, or anything, but just to, just to get to know each other. One of the most profound observations I ever had was from a friend in Augusta, as a matter of fact, who said, "You can't hate someone if you know the names of their kids." Isn't that a useful thought? And so, my goal is to try to have people get to know each other, maybe, and even learn the names of each other's kids, in a, in a small way to diminish this, uh, this problem of, of a lack of, of relationships. Uh, that's not a, it's not a cure-all, but I think it, there, there is something to The other thing that's changed, and I think is useful to comment on, is the ideological, uh, splitting of the parties. Uh, in 1964, I mean, the Civil Rights Bill passed, as we learned, with a combination of Republicans and Democrats. That's because there was a huge overlap of Republicans and Democrats, uh, in the Senate, uh, and in the House at that time, in terms of ideology, there, the, you know, you had John Stennis, a very conservative senator from Mississippi, who was a Democrat, you had Jacob Javits, a pretty liberal Republican from New York, so there was this constant, um, overlap, and, and the parties weren't so rigid. Today, if you analyze the voting patterns of the, of the members, there's no overlap. There's no overlap. And in the House, I have on my iPhone a chart of the, in the House of Representatives, in 1982, there were 344 members of the House who overlapped between the most conservative Democrat and the most liberal Republican. There were 344 representatives who fill, fell into this middle body. Today, it's 11, from 344 to 11. And that is a real problem, because the parties are so, and I can remember, uh, when I was in college, college professors say, "Well, our parties are sort of messy, and they ought to be more ideological and make more sense." Well, I think that was a, we've now learned that was a big mistake, uh, because it's made this, uh, this partisanship, uh, so fierce. Um, I do, I will say that I think there is an urge in the Senate to find a solution to that, and the best example was during the shutdown last October, when we, you know, the government was shut down, and it was just, you know, warfare, and Susan, I happened to be presiding, it was on a Saturday, and Susan came to the floor all by herself, and stood up and made a speech, and said, "I think we ought to find a solution here, and here's my idea." And a few minutes after her speech, she got a call from, I think, Lisa Murkowski, and a few others, and it ended up, we ended up with a group of 14 that met in Susan's office pretty much every day, uh, for the next, uh, week or so. Uh, it was, uh, seven Republicans, six Democrats, and me, and, uh, don't ever call it a gang, though, Susan will kill you. Uh, it was the Common Sense Caucus, and it was a group of people that just said, "This is ridiculous, let's find a solution," and indeed, we negotiated a solution, a settlement, uh, between, among the 14 of us, and, uh, were all set to, because nothing was happening. And at one point, it was kind of funny, at one point, we, we got calls from our respective leaderships, who said, "What are you doing? Who says you can do this? We're in charge, you know? Stand down." And then about, uh, 24 hours later, we got another call that said, "We're not getting anywhere, keep talking." Uh, and so, we did, and, uh, it, it came to, it came to a head, I don't remember what day of the week it was, but it came to a head, and, and Susan called, I think you called Mitch, didn't you? Called Mitch McConnell, essentially said, "We've got a deal, and if you and Harry Reid don't make a deal by about noon, we're going to the floor with our, we're gonna go have a press conference with our, with our deal, and people are joining." The neat thing is, people wanted to join when they heard about our group, we were getting people that said, "Oh, we want to come, we want to be involved in this," and I think that's a good sign, and lo and behold, Mitch McConnell and Harry Reid made a deal early that afternoon, and the, and the, uh, the shutdown was ended. Now, we can't quite claim full credit for it, but I think we did nudge that process along, because they knew if they didn't do something, there was another alternative that was waiting in the wings. Uh, so the, the point of that story is, there is an impulse toward trying to find common ground. And I talked to a senior Republican senator from out West, who had worked very closely with Ted Kennedy, and I said, "How in the world did you work successfully with Ted Kennedy?" And he said, "It was easy, we just agreed that we were gonna work on the 80% of the things we agreed on, and put the other 20% aside." That's how we achieved what we did, in a whole series of, of areas, and that's, that's how we have to, to, to try to make this thing, uh, to make this thing work. And the last, this last week, I don't know about you, Susan, but this has been a pretty dispiriting week. Uh, we've had a series of bills that should have been, they were bipartisan, should have gone through on a bipartisan basis, they got totally tangled up in who gets to do amendments, and how many amendments, and what are the nature of the amendments, and, and it was, it was, it was pretty bad, but coming out of that, I think, there is a, a growing mood to try to find a better way, uh, to try to solve, uh, some of the country's problems. It's compounded, of course, because this is an election year, and the big issue of this election year is who's going to control the Senate. So, the stakes are very high, uh, but that's, I, I do feel there's a kind of mood on both sides of can't we, can't we figure out how to, how to solve some of these problems, so that we're not just locked up all the time. Uh, okay. Uh, number four, observations, and this is one that I wouldn't have mentioned, you know, six months ago, but I've been there for a while. I'm calling this "The Tyranny of the Symbolic Vote." I don't like symbolic issues, issues where nobody really cares what the bill says, it's what it symbolizes. Probably the best example is the Keystone Pipeline. I, perhaps I shouldn't say this, but if the Keystone Pipeline is built, it won't end the environment as we know it, and if it isn't built, it won't end the economy. Do you see what I mean? It's, it's, but it's taken on this gigantic symbolic, so if you vote for it, you're against the environment. If you vote against it, you're against jobs. And, you know, the truth is, that it's a major project with, with impacts, uh, but, you know, if somebody, I know people who are strongly in favor of it, and they're not anti-environment. Uh, the one that I experienced recently was something called the Paycheck Fairness Act. Who can be against something called the Paycheck Fairness Act? Well, my problem was, I thought it was a bad bill, based on bad data, so I voted against it. Well, I, a lot of women in Maine are saying, "How dare you, you're against paycheck fairness for women." Well, pay equality for women was enacted in something called the Pay Equity Act in 1963. This bill did a lot of things that I thought were inimical to the, to the economy of the country, I didn't think it was based on good data, but nobody, I had an encounter with a, with a friend of mine, who's a lawyer, and I explained to her what I thought the issues were the bill was, and she listened very politely, at the end, she said, "I don't care, you voted against women." And, and, and I have a whole, I have a whole list. Uh, Senator Inhofe had an amendment during the budget about, "The U.S. cannot enter into a treaty at the U.N. involving guns." Well, the only problem was, there wasn't any treaty at the U.N. involving guns at that time, it hadn't been drafted, it involved international arms trafficking, and, so I voted against it, but it became a symbolic issue, if you vote for this treaty, if you, if you didn't vote for the Inhofe amendment, you're in favor of the U.N. taking our guns away. I'm still getting emails on that, and, you know, the details don't matter. Do, do, am I making any sense here? You, you see what I mean? And, and we've got one coming up, uh, there's a judge who's been nominated for the First Circuit Court of Appeals. There's a judge who's been nominated for the First Circuit Court of Appeals, who wrote some memos when he worked for the President about the legality of the drone program. Well, the issue, whether he should be a judge is, is he a good lawyer, is he a good legal thinker, how, what's his analysis, what's his history, what's his background? But I'm, I fear that this vote is becoming a referendum on the drone program, rather than on his qualifications to be a judge. And so if I vote for him, then I'm in favor of drones. Forget about, you know, this guy's 35-year stellar career as, as a lawyer and a, and a professor. So the point I'm trying to make is, I, I don't, I don't mind taking votes, but it's, these votes that are, that are designed to try to divide you into a group. And, and I have no conclusion to this story, except to, to suggest that there are always other stories behind the headlines. And, and, and my, I feel my job is to try to make my best decisions based on the information and data, and not because it's, you know, this, if you vote against, if you vote for this, you're in favor of polar bears, and if you vote against it, you're, you know, you're, you're a bad guy. And, and these kinds of things seem to happen, particularly in an election year, where these votes are put forward and, and you have to take a position, and, and there's not a lot of subtlety to it. Okay, that's number four. There are only five of these, by the way, so you're in good shape. And then I do wanna, have an issue I wanna talk about. Number five is, despite the frustrations, despite the difficulties, despite the, the usual gridlock, what an exciting place to work. Our little house is on the east side of the Capitol, so in the morning, I walk generally up Maryland Avenue, and you see the sun coming up, lighting up the Capitol dome. It's amazing. I mean, I'm like a kid, it's, I literally pinch myself. Also, having been a staff member, I continually expect someone to come and tell me I can't be somewhere. You know, to be able to walk onto the Senate floor, which, you know, when you're a staff member, happens, you know, once every three months, was, was, you know, I still can't quite get used to that. And people come up to me and say, "Good morning, Senator," and I say, "Oh, who's here? Who are they talking to?" But it is an amazing, thrilling place to work, and in part, because you have the opportunity to deal with issues at the highest level. And, and to interact at, at very, you know, on major national kinds of issues. Last week, I was on the Budget Committee cross-examining the Chairman of the Fed. I mean, how cool is that? I said to somebody the other day, "All my life, I've been yelling at the TV, now I get to yell at the real people." You know? And it's an extraordinary opportunity, and it's an extraordinary opportunity to represent a state like Maine that has, it has, Maine has a great reputation, and people, it's an immediate, you know, people immediately give you a little stature because, because you represent Maine. So it, it's a wonderful experience. I quite often, one of the most frequent questions I get is, "How do you like being a senator after being a governor?" And the answer is, they're two very different jobs, but there are 11 former governors in the Senate. And we have formed the Former Governors Caucus. We had a meeting just this week. And somebody said it should be called the Extremely Frustrated Caucus. And in fact, I don't know if you've heard me tell this story, Susan, but I was mentioning this to Mitch McConnell, that we were forming this caucus, and, and the former governors. And he said, "Well," I can't really imitate him, he said, "Well, uh, said, 'Well Angus,'" he says, "'I've, I've noticed that if you have a senator who's a former governor, and you ask them which job they like better, and they say senator, they'll lie to you about other things.'" So, I thought that was, I thought that was a pretty good, pretty good response. But I, I find it incredibly stimulating and, and exciting, occasionally frustrating for sure. But to be, to be able to, to attempt to make this country a better place and deal with, with the important issues that we're dealing with is a, is a lifetime, a lifetime opportunity. Okay. Let me just change the subject momentarily, maybe I ought to stop there. In fact, I think I will.